This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:03 PM. Madam Clerk, please do a roll call. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Shockley will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The clerk is not here, so we'll delay looking at the meeting minutes. May I have a motion from a member of the council to go into executive session for the following purposes? Closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A1 on discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss candidates for the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission and Conservation Commission. Second, closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, session pertaining to litigation, specifically to discuss the following: Center of New England versus Cambio and others, KC 2013-0350 and 5001. And closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, discussion of Town of Barrington versus others versus the State of Rhode Island and others, CA number PC 2019-100870. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you.
My second motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. The motion passes. We are now in executive session. The town council will now, we move itself to the executive session room, and we will be back approximately 7:30 PM for those members of the public who would like to join us. Thank you.
Any minutes for you, sir?
Good evening, everyone. May I have a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
Still moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call. Madam Clerk? Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
James LeBlanc?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Ben Marchand?
Yes.
Nick Gorham?
Here. Here.
Five yays, no nays for adjourning from the executive session. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Still moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Yes. Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays. The motion passes. Our members of the public, the council met an executive session for the following: Closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A1 on discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss candidates for the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission and the Conservation Commission. The council did interview three candidates this evening, and two will be appointed this evening. Secondly, closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, session pertaining to litigation, specifically to discuss the following: Center of New England versus Cambio and others, KC 2013-0350 and 5001. A discussion took place. No votes were taken. And closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, discussion of Town of Barrington versus others versus the State of Rhode Island and other, CA number PC 2019-100870. The council did not have time to discuss this in executive session, and will be meeting at the end of the meeting to go back into executive session. We're now on agenda item C3. The council anticipates the following openings on these boards and commissions. We still have openings on the sewer subcommittee for alternates, two full members and two alternates, and we have been talking about this for quite some time. This can be a very, very interesting, exciting position. Lots of good people on this commission, including two members of our own council, Mr. LeBlanc and Ms. Ludwig, and anyone who's interested in being on this commission, please do contact either of those members, and they can give you firsthand information about what the commission or what the board is doing. So we welcome you to put in an application for the sewer subcommittee. We also have openings on the Conservation Commission, and this commission has not been active for a few years, I would say at least two. We're going to try to activate this, and our goal, or at least my goal, is to get this group activated by the fall, and we'll see what we can do to generate some interest in that. So if anyone is interested in the sewer subcommittee or the Conservation Commission, please do let us know. Announcement number two. The council wants members on our boards and commissions to be successful and to fully understand their role. The council is going to offer training in the near future for board members, and one of the members of our council did suggest the need for training, and that was our vice president, Ms. Ludwig, and I'm going to ask her to just speak very briefly about training.
I don't think I was the only one. I think a few of us asked, but...
Well, you started it.
So I think sometimes we appoint people to committees, and then they don't really know what to do afterwards. So I do want to say a thank you to Town Clerk Joanne Ametrono, because she did update the application form and give some links that people need, for example, the Rhode Island OMA, so to understand what we can and can't say outside of the session. And now I think we need some more training for people to better understand what some of these rules mean and how they can have an impact here.
Thank you. The next announcement. There will be a public forum Saturday, August 7, 2021, at 10:00 AM to present and to discuss the proposed solar farm on Arnold Road at the site of the former transfer station. The forum will be in person and will also allow Zoom participation. And I'm going to ask Mr. Wazika, what is the location for that meeting?
Location there will be over at the annex.
At the annex. Okay. So we will so advertise that it will be at the annex. That will allow many people to attend, more than would be able to attend in the council chambers. So once again, it's a public forum, Saturday, August 7, 2021, at 10:00 AM in the annex, and notifications will be sent out to residents in that area to alert them to the fact that there will be a public forum, and they'll be able to give input. And the person on the council who suggested that there be a public forum is Mr. LeBlanc. So thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for asking for that, and we're following through. So thank you again. Agenda item C4. Before I do that, I just want to mention that our town clerk, Mrs. Ametrono, is absent this evening, and the assistant clerk, Debbie LaVoye, is with us. So thank you, Debbie, for joining us this evening. Happy to have you with us. Item C4. Mr. Marchand will introduce the presentation by Stephen Gross, Director Assurance, Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, for the Coventry Rhode Island Financial Audit of 2019-2021. We've allotted about 30 to 45 minutes for this agenda item, and I hope it's enough time, because I know that you presented a very extensive report. So, Mr. Marchand, will you lead the presentation, please?
Certainly. I'd like to welcome Stephen Gross and his associate from Clifton Larson Allen, and they're going to present the audited financial statements for the Town of Coventry. And I believe that there's a correction, that this is for 2019-2020, not 21.
Thank you.
Can I ask if we have access to that, to put on the screen for those watching through Do we have a way of getting that presentation so we can present it to the townspeople who are on Zoom?
It's on my computer. Are we recording?
I really do. I just feel it would be more beneficial for people watching from home.
So, gentlemen, I would like to invite you to start the presentation. That would be fine, or sit down, whatever you feel comfortable doing. Mr. Gross?
Oh.
He's Mr. Gross.
Is he on now? Yeah, okay. My name's Ron Nosick. I'm a partner at CLA. I'm the actual engagement partner here for the Town of Coventry. On the, I guess, on the totem pole, Steve works for me, but the reality of it is, I work for Steve. But Steve, you can sit down. If you, you know, when we open it up to questions, or if you have questions, as I'm moving through this, either Steve or I will address them as best we can serve you.
Mr. Lawson? Excuse me. The members of the council enjoy asking questions. So I'm going to ask them to each introduce themselves, so that as they ask the questions, they'll be a little bit more familiar. So I'm going to start with Ms. LeBlanc.
Jim LeBlanc, Councilmember for District 3.
Hillary Lima, District 4.
Kimberly Shockley, District 5.
I'm Ann Dixon, District 1.
Hi. John Ludwig, District 2.
Introduce yourself, Mr. Wilson.
I thought you said council members. Nick Gorham, councilor. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
And you know our town manager?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay. The presentation, its design is to be, you know, 35,000, 40,000 feet. We're not getting into the nooks and crannies of the financial statements. Again, we'll address any questions that you might have relative to the financial statements themselves, or to any other item that might be in your mind relative to the... Yeah?
Can I ask, did you get into the nooks and crannies, and you're giving us 10,000 feet tonight? Or your goal was to give the 10,000?
We're 10,000 feet. I mean, we'd be...
Just wanted to...
Yeah, we'd be five hours going through 170-page documents. So I've been doing this for a long time. It really is difficult to maneuver through that document with a group of people by its nature. So we can certainly come back. I have done that in the past with other clients. We tend to do it in a workshop environment, if that's the desire of council. We're more than happy to fulfill that need if you request it. So for now, for this evening, what we're planning on going through are basically the terms of the engagement, most importantly, the reporting results of the engagement, some financial highlights, and that's when we're really at a high level. And then I just wanted to make you aware of some required communications that were actually released today that come from us, your auditors, to you, those charged with governance. And then I'll go through a little bit of the management advisory letter, which was also released today. I believe those will probably be sent to you tomorrow. If they haven't been sent to you already, we released via email, and it can just forward right to you, to all of you at management's, you know, I guess, timing relative to when they release those to you. But, so from the terms of the engagement, all audits in the State of Rhode Island due to state law are performed in at least, under at least two sets of standards. We're performing audit engagement here under generally accepted auditing standards, which follow GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, and we issue an opinion relative to the financial statements. That is the primary opinion. That is really the most important item that is in the bound document of 170 pages. And quite honestly, from a legal perspective, it is the only thing in that 170 pages that belongs to us. While we do assist management in the preparation of the financial statements, the financial statements are not ours. They're not, the financial statements don't belong to auditors, they belong to management. They're management's assertions of the financial position and results of operations of the town for the fiscal year ended, in this case, June 30, 2020. Under Rhode Island law, we're also required to perform the audit engagement under generally accepted governmental auditing standards, which is commonly referred to as Yellow Book. What that basically does is it lays a requirement on us to gain an understanding of the internal control structure that is the oversight structure to all financial reporting here in the town, and then also to gain an understanding and report to you any violations of compliance that, in our mind, would be deemed material to the financial statements. So those high-level compliance requirements tend to be around debt covenants, filing, external filing requirements, things of that nature. So that's some of the areas that we're looking at. The bigger body of work relative to Yellow Book is the understanding of the internal control structure over financial reporting. And then finally, because you receive more than $750,000 in federal money, we're required to perform an audit under uniform guidance, which formerly was referred to as the Federal Single Audit, or the Federal Single Audit Act. That's very similar to Yellow Book in that it requires us to gain an understanding of the internal controls over your major federal programs and report on those controls over the major federal programs, and then also issue an opinion on compliance relative to those major federal programs. The only difference, or the primary difference, if you will, between uniform guidance and Yellow Book is Yellow Book is overarching to the entity. Uniform guidance is only on those major federal programs. So the spotlight is pretty narrow relative to those. So we actually issue reports under all three sets of those standards. Our primary audit opinion, as I stated, which is under generally accepted auditing standards and under, referring to the financial statements, which are reported under generally accepted accounting principles, we've issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion on the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. So what that basically says, if you guys are going to look at that, we're on, is someone jumping this? Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. So actually, in a governmental financial statement, there are multiple opinions that are all consolidated in that, in that report, which is on page 1, 2, and 3 of the bound document, because we're reporting or opining, I should say, on your governmental activities, your business-type activities, each major fund individually, and then the aggregate remaining funds, all consolidated up. So there's upwards of maybe five opinion units, six opinion units, that we're all referring to and opining on in those financial statements. So again, we issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion on the financial statements as of June 30, 2020. And again, as I said, that, what it basically states is that, in our opinion, the financial statements fairly represent the financial position and results of operations of the town for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. Under the governmental auditing standards, as I stated earlier, we do provide a report that is a piece, or a standalone report within your federal single audit report, and we address, as I said, internal controls over the financial reporting system here in town, and we would report to you in order, descending order of importance, any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other matters that we found during our gaining of understanding and testing of that internal control system. So in the case of June 30, 2020, we did have a deficiency that we deemed a significant deficiency that was identified relative to 2020, and it related to financial reporting accuracy. Basically, what it had to do with is primarily, we had about an $8 million restatement.
Total of that?
Ten, $10 million restatement of the financial statement. So basically, a restatement is saying that your previous financial statements were incorrect. They weren't materially, materially correct when they were issued. Our hands are pretty much locked, but I'm not going to suggest we would alter off of having a finding relative to that. But the AACPA issued some guidance probably about eight years ago relative to restatements. And if there is a restatement in a set of financial statements, by its nature, it means there's at least a significant deficiency, if not a material weakness. There were other audit adjustments that we presented in order to set the financial statements in a position that we felt needed to be set in order for them to be materially correct. And so all of that combined caused us to report this significant deficiency over financial reporting accuracy.
Mr. Lawson, what is the significance of this deficit? Or is it a deficit or deficiency of $10 million?
The significance?
Yes.
Wow.
I mean, I don't understand what it relates to.
Okay.
What it means.
Okay.
What we need to, as a council, think about, do, et cetera.
Okay. So it related to two things. One impacted your business-type activity. So in your sewer fund, you have receivables into the tune of about $8 million, I think, that are, I'm drawing a blank, Steve. No, but the other side, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, the sewer assessments. And the previous auditors had deferred that entire receivable. So its net impact on operations was zero. There's a debit on the balance sheet, and there's a credit on the balance sheet. But under generally accepted accounting principles, under a business-type activity, you don't defer that receivable. That receivable is recognized as revenue in the year that those receivables are levied. So we had to pull that into revenue. So in the case of, you know, the direction that it took your net position or your retained earnings, if you will, in that business-type activity, it was a positive. It increased it by $8 million, because it was no longer hanging on the credit side of the balance sheet. It actually got pushed through, it should have been pushed through operations. It got pushed right directly into net position at that point in time. The other is a governmental-type activity, or was reflected in your governmental activities. So in your government-wide financial statements, you have a liability relative to your landfill, and that falls under GASB 18, generally accepted accounting standard, Board Statement 18, relative to that liability. And it's a liability that is calculated over time. So it is the closure, the closing costs, as well as the EPA monitoring costs, out for 30 years. So that was in excess, I think, just in excess of $2 million, somewhere in there. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Hi, Mr. Wazika, do you have a question?
My only question is, does that take into account the money that's sitting with PR P to cover all the monitoring costs?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so there was $3 million in excess in that.
Yes.
You're saying on top of that, there's another $2 million shy in monitoring?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I think also that those assets, because they're not in trust, actually don't, are not allowed to be credited with.
Okay, well, yeah, we can't keep putting that in trust until after the whole...
Right, right.
So it's not really a deficit, it's there, it hasn't been covered, it hasn't been booked yet because of...
It's a liability that...
Right.
Yeah.
It's a liability that hasn't been booked yet into it because of the fact that it's not in trust.
Okay. So also, then, still under governmental auditing standards, as I stated earlier, we're supposed to report to you any violations of compliance that we find. There were none, so there's nothing to report relative to those. And then finally, under uniform guidance, as I stated, we issue an opinion on compliance relative to the major programs that were tested. There were two major, there were two federal programs that were determined to be major programs that we tested. Your Title I, that had total expenditures of $836,691, and Special Education Grants Cluster, which had a total expend of $1,479,544. So those two combined actually covered about 55%, almost 56% of all of your federal program expenditures for the fiscal year. We issued an unmodified or clean audit opinion, so there were no compliance findings relative to those two programs and the compliance requirements that we're required to test that are actually provided to us. We don't have any flexibility relative to what it is we got to test for major federal programs. The federal government tells us what we have to test. And then relative to internal controls over major federal programs, there were no, there were no, there were no material weaknesses relative to the controls. We did have a deficiency there as well, due to the fact that your procurement policies are not in line with federal procurement policies. That was something that federal government enacted, I think, two fiscal years ago. So there needs to be some tweaking to your procurement policies in order for them to come in compliance with federal guidelines.
So does this include the town and the school? When you say major federal program compliance requirements?
They do, but your major federal programs that were tested this year were both under the school department, not, there were no federal programs that were tested under the town. But we did look at the procurement policy on both sides in order to determine if it was in compliance with the federal procurement policy.
Can I also ask a question, actually, to Director Mills? Is this something that we've already gone over, the findings here? For example, have we had any discussions with Director Sands?
Let me see your notes.
Okay, so this is the first time we're hearing about it, or publicly hearing about it, and now we need to make sure items are addressed?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So that would wrap up all of the reporting results, which, again, that's primarily what we're here for. There are financial statements, a pretty robust document that's attached to the end product that we deliver, but as I said, the only thing that belongs to us is, are the things that are on our letterhead, and those are those three reports. So we'll jump into some financial highlights again. Yeah?
Can I just go back, just because I'm not an auditor, and sometimes the spreadsheet just doesn't match for me?
Okay.
So there was $8 million in receivables that weren't being booked.
Right.
We had the money.
No, the receivables were booked, but they were all deferred. So they were never recognized as revenue.
Okay, so we never put them into our revenue?
Correct.
Can you explain that to me?
Well, so, so let's, you know, to give you an example of what a deferred revenue would be, okay? If, let's say, you owned a hotel, and you were booking a wedding that was going to happen six months from now, and someone gave you a $20,000 deposit to hold for that wedding that's going to happen six months from now. That's a deferred revenue. You haven't earned that yet. There's still services you have to deliver in order for the earnings process to take place. So in that case, if you were following generally accepted accounting principles, you would have a receivable and deferred revenue, both on your balance sheet. If two entries are on the balance sheet and they're equal to one another, operations are never impacted. Nothing ever gets into net earnings or retained earnings, whatever, whatever you're more familiar with, you know, relative to terminology. In this case, that earnings process was completed. Under accounting standards, that earning process was completed. So what we're looking at was incorrect, and we knew it was incorrect, and so we posed, proposed the prior period adjustment in order to bring that into your net position, or your fund balance, if you will, in that, in that fund. It's called net position because it's a business-type activity, not a governmental activity.
So just using your example, I could see why someone would do that for a hotel. I didn't, I want this revenue to show up when I do the work.
Right.
I want June to be the month this shows up in. Why would we do it?
Well, first of all, it's, as I said, it's happening in a business-type activity, which follows full GAAP, not modified GAAP. So accounting standards, accounting principles are the same whether it's in government or whether it's in commercial accounting, relative to business-type activities. It's the same thing. It's an exchange transaction. Both sides have met their, you know, their requirements relative to that exchange transaction, so the full earnings process takes place.
And I don't know, on behalf of the town, if, or Mr. Marchand or Ms. Mills has some idea of why the revenue stream never came in when the work was done?
Well, I mean, I was here five months, so...
Oh, no, I know, I just...
Yeah, so I wasn't here when that was booked, and I believe Mr. Marchand wasn't either. I can't speculate on why they booked it as a deferred revenue. It's the equivalent, you know, to the booking as a liability. And what this gentleman was referring to is it never hit the P and L, so it never hit revenue. It was sitting out there on the balance sheet in totality. I don't understand why, because it is an enterprise fund, and it should be booked and recognized.
But in the end, we're $8 million... And so, but in the end, we're $8 million better off than it looked on the books before. We had the money the whole time.
Well, no, you have the receivable.
We don't have the money.
You have the receivable.
Okay.
So when income is earned, so when income, cash basis, where cash basis are like when we do our 1040s, right? So when we receive the cash, we pick up that as incomes, individuals generally, right? But in this case, it's accrual, so it's when it's earned. So even if I earn the money at December 31st, it should be booked as revenue because it's deemed to be when it's earned, not when we receive the cash. And so that's what this, that's what this gentleman's explaining. So why it's not booked, it doesn't make sense because it's an enterprise fund? I, I can't speculate why, but.
I can't either.
So, I mean, it's, it's.
Because we were under, we were wanting that, they were wanting it under a cash basis and not a accrual basis until this last, that last fiscal year, up until that point that it only been wanting to cash. We converted it over to accrual last year with this dollar net. So why it wasn't booked in with that once we squirts over, I, I don't know. That's the reason it hadn't been, because they had been operating that fund under cash and not as accrual.
Okay, and it never should be cash, just so you know.
That's the way it had been.
All right, yeah. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sorry, just one last thing. So it sounds like you're agreeing with the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I promise you, Mr. Lawson, that you would have questions.
Yes, yes. Okay, so for the, for the financial highlights, and as I said, this is truly the $35,000, $40,000 fee, a foot, foot view. But so I don't want to confuse anybody here. There's, there's actually, your general fund actually reports under two methods of accounting. You report under GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, and you also report under a budgetary system that is probably most familiar to you. Most, most boards that monitor general fund activity throughout the year are getting a budget to actual report on a monthly basis, and they're evaluating where, you know, where expenditures are, where are we relative to revenue collection compared to what we estimated and things of that nature. So there are some nuance-ical differences, mostly on the expenditure side, as to what is reported as an expenditure under GAAP compared to what might be reported as an expenditure under budgetary accounting. The primary difference is encumbrances. GAAP does not recognize encumbrances. Your budgetary accounting does. Encumbrances is, encumbrances are used to lock up your budget because you know you have an expenditure coming into a particular line item down the road, and you don't want to be in a position where someone else jumps in line, for lack of a better term, expends that authorization, and then when your PO comes in, you've got, you've got no authorization in order to expend that. So that's, that's basically the difference. I think, to be honest with you here, I don't, I don't think they had a lot of outstanding encumbrances a year, and so we may, we may be talking about negligible differences if at best. But I just wanted to clarify that before I make the opening bullet statement here on a GAAP basis. So under generally accepted accounting principles, total revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund for the fiscal year by $3,145,588. That brought your total fund balance up to $18,029,888 in the general fund as of June 30, 2020. You're probably familiar with this, but your, your fund balance has different classifications. If something is designated or assigned, if, you know, it's usually assigned if you do have encumbrances, but there's always, the, the bottom line there is your unassigned fund balance. So that's, that's free fund balance, if you will, relative to future appropriations. So that unassigned fund balance as of June 30 was $11,918,03, and that represents 14.8% of your total budgetary expenditures and operating transfers out. So that actually does, that percentage, percentage does measure against your budgetary activity. But again, I don't think there's a whole lot of difference here in Coventry between your budgetary activity and, and your GAAP activity. Now, looking at this on a budgetary basis, actual budgetary revenues received exceeded your budgetary estimates by $1,769,363. And your actual budgetary expenditures that you incurred came in under planned expenditure appropriations by $1,514,768. So overall, that generated a surplus, if you will, from a budgetary perspective of $2,648,510 for the year. Now, that math won't work if you just look at those two numbers. There's other finding, I saw your pencil going, so I figured, all right, I got a question coming. There's, there's, there's another category in there, other financing sources and uses, which in the, in the case of Coventry is all just transfers out of the general fund, which, which reduce, in this case, reduce that, that surplus down a little bit. So we didn't throw those in here simply because they, they weren't that significant. And they actually, from, from a variance perspective, there were no variances. You plan to transfer out $1 million, you transfer out $1 million. The, the key item that I, I like to focus on here, and it's a good conversation this evening, is, you know, when you look at those budgetary variances, you look at the revenue side and you're almost, almost $1,008,000 to the good. What that tells a reader, what it could, what it could tell a rating agency, is that you're realistic with your budget revenue, with, with, with your budgetary process and procedures relative to revenue. You're not pie in the sky, praying something hits so that you don't have to increase taxes. Same can be said relative to the expenditure side. Of course, you know, that bias is, is, is on the other side, right? You, you're thinking worst-case scenario there, but when you're formulating those anticipated appropriations and making those authorizations, you're, you're, you're doing it within the perspective of what's real and not what you hope to happen. I guess, you know, to, I've been doing this for a long time, and I, I've seen examples where councils have been told, you need to cut the budget by $2 million, and they go into every department and just put a negative line in, in, in the departmental budget. Nobody identified anything that needs to be reduced, but they effectively reduced the, the overall bottom spending line, therefore tax, you know, mill rates didn't have to go up. And that's, to, you know, to me, that's just inappropriate budgeting, but, but it does happen. But clearly, that's, that's not the case here. The last thing on this page.
Excuse me, I'm saying, Mr. Lawson, this report is as of ending June 30th, 2020. So now we're a year after that.
Yep.
So my question is, how do we behave prudently, continue to be realistic? What got, we need some guidelines from you, or at least I would like some guidelines from you, so that we continue on this realistic path? Because this is a year-old report.
Yeah, you, it is a year old. And, you know, I, I often say, auditors are historians. They, they don't, they don't have a crystal ball. We don't look at the future, we just tell you what happened. But Lisa would be, would be most appropriate to address that because we're not monitoring on an ongoing basis as to where you are and where your activities are. But from, from the perspective of budgetary strategy, you all set that. You, you dictate that. Your auditors could never dictate that. As a matter of fact, if I, if I tried to, I would be stepping over the line of independence and, and, and wouldn't be able to be your auditor anymore, to be quite honest with you. That's basically tone at the top. That's, that's what sets that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask another question?
Sure.
On the back of that. So if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, so we're, we're pretty close, but we're still over, because I'm seeing terms like budgetary surplus of 2.6 at the end of last year.
Right.
So can we, I don't know if maybe Mr. Marshant or Lisa can help us just conceptually understand this? Because when we use the term surplus, even, and I know this was a year ago, but when we use the term surplus, people are asking us, if we have a surplus, why, you know, why are we, aren't we using that money? Why are we asking for tax increases? So is, is this a matter of timing? So for example, we have those funds, but they're about to be paid out. Like what, what, what do we do when we see surplus? And I, I know you weren't here for that, but just generally, you know, it's coming up again, for example, for this year.
I'll take the first shot. One is, because we're looking back a year, we didn't know what surpluses or deficits we would have because the financials had never been put together. And because of the delay and putting everything into the auditor's hands, we just didn't know what the numbers were going to be. We didn't know our beginning balances, we didn't know our ending balances. And so getting this report now is telling us what actually happened a year ago. And we had an idea of it, but there were so many moving parts and things that we had to confirm, things that we were finding up right up until the last minute. You know, we had multiple deadlines and, you know, they kept getting pushed back because we kept finding new things that hadn't been booked, hadn't been considered. And so the, the receivables on the sewer fund, the, the holdings and the liabilities for the landfill all kept moving that, those goalposts week to week, all throughout. So we wouldn't have known any of this, we couldn't have known any of this before we were asking the budget, for the budget approvals for the next fiscal year. And it will improve our position today going forward. And as we put the financial reporting practices and procedures in place, I know that the finance department has doing, been doing some really heavy lifting to start booking cash, not just depositing the cash the day they receive it, but booking it in the general ledger entries. And by doing that on a daily and weekly basis, we're going to have more accurate month-end statements so that when we get to year end, like June 30, we'll have a package to present to the auditors and we'll be on top of our finances way better. We literally are just finding this out because we're a year behind. So finance is trying to catch up, get us ahead so that we're more on time with what our actual financial picture is. And so that's, that's what I would attribute the discrepancy to, is to, well, when, when the public asks you, why did you raise taxes? It's because we really didn't know whether we were going to have a surplus or a deficit from a year ago because we hadn't booked everything out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, and I can just add a little bit to that and to, to add to your, your question, Ms. Jen, about, are we looking at this on a budgetary reason, budgetary to actual? And the, the mere fact that this year's budget was very transparent, we, we got to the point that it was so transparent, we, we took the, that general fund, 950 department, and we allocated it to certain people to be responsible for that, those lines. And we, we literally drilled in the finance department every number that was on that trial balance. So not, not certain if that was done in the past, but I think our budget this year is going to be, you know, very accurate or close to it. And to, to add to Mr. Marshant's statement, I mean, we didn't really, it wasn't, it was not, not just those entries, there's several other entries that were moving the goalposts. But I, I think we need to, right now, our procurement process, I don't believe is, is the best. We are paying bills after we have an invoice. We should be having them approved before we buy something so we know what's encumbered and we can monitor it easily. That's not done right now. And I see that as a, a problem that we need to, to clean up very quickly because we didn't get down to the last month if it's a tight budget and, and we're not, let's just say, getting approval prior to purchasing it, it could run into some issues.
And so while we work towards some of those changes or improvements, just, and I don't know if now is an appropriate time or you want to talk about it later, you know, can we get some sort of idea on what the appropriate timeline for this is? Because it, it sounds like the, the timings continue getting moved. I know that we had some delays on getting information to the auditors.
So, so right now, the finance department is in, improving internal controls. We're setting, we're writing procedures. We have segregation of duties going on right now. We have some new controls that we're doing from department heads requesting certain reports, the way certain invoices are, are being presented to make sure there's no duplication, entering invoices, one invoice at a time. That's what only we can do. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot to do. And like Mr. Marshant said, we're, we're trying to book it as we deposit it. We, it's always been deposited on that single day, but, so now we're trying to book it as rapidly, and that's basically managing the workflow. But it, it's still, it's, to, to get to the procurement process the way we need to, it's a software, it's a software issue and whether Keystone can do that and we have to change that procedure or not. But right now, we don't have, we are not approving purchases until after they're done. So it's kind of, it's what I call, I mean, I won't say it's, it's a worthless process, but you, I'm getting requisitions to approve to pay, and then there's the invoice. Well, the services or the product have already been delivered. So at that point, we have to pay it. So there's not the best of controls. I mean, everyone has, every department has their own controls of what their budget is and, and those expenses are within the purview of their budget. I'm not saying they're not, but as far as internal control, when it gets down to the end, the only way that's going to tighten those internal controls is to have a procurement process that is mandated that you, you go through the process before you purchase it.
Yes to internal controls, yes to transparency. We need to have the right people doing the right jobs. It sounds like you're doing the right things, thank you very much. And then at some point, can we talk about the timeline for going forward, just what we expect for the next audit?
I, I'm sure you'll appreciate the, some humor in this, that Mr. Gross has moved his computers into the conference room this morning to begin the pre-audit. And we're getting the report for 2020 tonight.
This is the, the pre-audit for next year?
For '21.
For '21. So he's already started working on it?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to be with us for a while?
It's like he never left.
For the week? Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, I, I, it sounds like we need to have more discussions, agenda items relating to things that are being done in the finance department. Thank you for beginning the process, Ms. Mills. We're very happy to hear the good news. Thank you. Mr. Lawson, there was a little bit of a delay here, but this is the way the council goes. You know, a question comes up and we just need to answer it. But thank you so much, continue please.
Sure. The only, the last thing I just wanted to bring your attention on this slide is, is a bullet in the middle of the page relative to that unassigned fund balance and its representation of 14.8% of the budgetary expenditures and transfers out. But I, I think this is going to change a little bit, but the, the relative guidance that's out there is to have your general fund, fund, unassigned fund balance somewhere in a range of 8 to 16%. So you're, you're, you know, in a pretty good position where you are. But I do think that that range is going to climb, to be quite honest with you, but, but time will tell. So the next slide is actually, we need the Hubble telescope to see it, and I apologize for that, but it's a snapshot of one of the exhibits out of the financial statements. And some of the numbers we talked about are on this snapshot and are in the financial statements themselves. If you want to pan that down, if you would, on that general fund column, so that first column, if you see the unassigned fund balance number down there, it's 1, 2, 3, about four lines up from the bottom, that's the $11,918,03 that we're talking about. So that's where, that's where that's presented on the financial statements. And then if you, and you, you can see the total fund balance there that we also addressed, $18,029,88. So I want to jump the slide, again, staying in that first column. Go ahead to the next slide, I'm sorry. And this is, if you see right down on the bottom in that first column, the $3,145,588, that's the net change in fund balance. We also talked about that relative to, from a GAAP perspective, what the increase in fund balance was year over year. So I just, I, I throw those in there just to, you know, try to be able to pinpoint to you where this stuff is that I'm talking about. And, and it's also why if I were to work from the document, trust me, maybe two people would know where I am and everybody else would be frustrated not knowing where I am. So I try to avoid that. So I try to avoid that. If you jump again to the next slide, this is the budgetary statement. You might want to skinny it down a little bit. Yeah, but again, this is, this is actually is RSI 1 in your financial statements. So it comes deeper into the document after the notes to the financial statements. But that far right column is the variance column where I was referring to your surpluses in revenue. So you see, if you, if you go over, across the page from that first sub-line of total revenues, you, you were anticipating $81,629,77. You took in $83 million. The third column over is the actual right there, $83,393,40. That fourth column is the variance. You see you had other taxes was the only negative variance that was in there. Your general property taxes well outperformed your estimates, but the million, $1,769,363, 383, my eyes aren't that good unfortunately. That was again, something we referenced earlier as well as if you go down in the expenditure, same thing. So these are just reference points, if you will, for you to have as you delve into that document. The last things we'll talk about from a financial perspective are the long-term liabilities, which I think are in, in every government's mind in, in New England, if not throughout the country. And if you look at this schedule, you'll see the, the, this basically is taking you from beginning balance to ending balance. So from June, July 1 of 19 to June 30, 2020, total long-term liability, liabilities increased $11,433,210,000 during the fiscal year. It was primarily due to a change in your OPEB liability. That discount rate was dropped quite significantly from a percentage, you know, overall percentage of where it was. It was at 3.5% and it went down to 2.21%. Because there is no trust, because that is an unfunded plan, it has to follow the long-term municipal bond rate, which as we all know is, is, is pretty anemic. So your, your hand is kind of forced there relative to how the actuaries are measuring that. The next bullet, your net pension liability at June 30 was $165,767,429. That was an increase of three point, a little over 3.8 million. Pension plans over the past couple of years have, have benefited from market conditions, especially from 19 to 20, because at the end of June 30, 19, the, you know, the market was pretty, pretty deflated, but it was deflated at 20 as well. So you kind of probably took a hit in that plan. I'd have to go to the financial statements to take a look at it, but it recovered within four months probably, five months relative to investment values. But you do see, and we've, you know, presented to you there, the, the funding percentage of those plans. So your municipal employees' plan is 42% funded. So you have assets in trust that equate to 42% of that total liability. The police plan is at 23%, which I, I would assume we'll all agree is, is kind of low. And then the SRP plan is at 41.9%. So those, you know, those are going to be burdensome for a while. Our understanding is that the contributions going into those plans are in accordance with what the ARC is, the actuarially required contribution. If you believe in actuarial science, which I, I do, and you meet what they're telling you, you got to pay in on an annual basis, the plan will fund at some point down the road.
Question.
Of course.
I very much appreciate you calling out the pension liability. It's a very significant liability for this town, $165,767,429 per the consolidated balance sheet. But when we're talking about the police pension in particular, that liability is $86,704,198 per page 58. And we only have it funded by $20,000,038,000. So when I look further, the town's only contributing $5,626,000 for the FY '21, but the benefits going out was 4.3 million, let's just call it. So if we're just talking about contributions and pension payments out, it's going to take us about 50 years to fund that plan. Obviously, there's actuarial analysis and there's obviously investment returns, but the state allows a percent which is crazy, in my opinion, but it should more, you should be more conservative around maybe five or four. But in any event, how do you think we're going to dig out of being our auditor? How would we dig out of that, given our plan?
You know, blood and sweat. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a long haul. You're not alone. I mean, you know, look across New England and as I said, look across this country, you, you're, you're certainly not alone. You know, one of the things that I, I've, I've seen is, and, and please don't, I, I don't mean to offend anybody in council here, but there's often a lack of political will to change that discount rate, which puts you in a more realistic perspective relative to your funding levels and, and your ability to meet it in the market. Now, we sat through some meetings, our, our state and local government group earlier in the year with, I, I'm remiss at who your actuaries are, but we meet with Hooker and Holcomb, we meet with two other actuaries, Milliman, yeah. And they're suggesting that, you know, the, the high 6.7 isn't actually that far-fetched. I, I think I tend to line up with you, but nonetheless, if, if, if you're, you know, if your discount rate is in a reasonable, at a reasonable level and you're meeting that ARC, you're, you're, and, you know, God willing, maybe there's years you can put in more than what the actuary is telling you to contribute, then, then by all means, you'll, you'll gain ground. It's still going to be a long haul.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I know it's in critical condition, so I'm trying to focus on how we can get out of that. I will hold my other questions for that.
And then the last slide relative to financial information, it's actually the same, the same table that's sitting on there, but just, just, you know, wanted to give the OPEB liability, it's, 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 it's due time as well. That's, you know, that, that's up there. It's $27,339,394. It was an increase of 9.4 million year over year and that had to do with that decrease in the discount rate, which is forced by the fact that it's not funded. This, I, I, I think you all understand this, but that, that liability is only going to grow unless some funding mechanism is put in place. So, so that's it for the-
The last one, what is OPBEB?
Other, other post-employment benefits. So basically, it's, it's, you know, a lot of it is medical. So it's what you're paying retirees for, for, for benefits other than pension benefit.
Just to make sure I understand that, it was $18 million and went up to $27 million?
Yes.
In one year?
That discount rate, as I said, dropped rather precipitously.
I mean, $9 million is a lot no matter what, but on $18 million, just as a percentage, that's a humongous amount of money.
It is. But the, the, from, from an actuarial perspective, what you're working on is a 30-year amortization at that discount rate. And so you just, you basically almost cut your, your market earnings in half over 30 years. That's, that's going to be a big number. So the last section of this was, is, is our required communications, which as I said earlier, did come out, where they were released today. The only thing I'll, I'll talk to you about them are, is basically what the intent of those is, or the intent is. And we give a bunch of categories that we report to you relative to this information. So you can see them there by bullet qualitative aspects of accounting practices, which relates to estimates that are embedded in the financial statements. And we also are required to report to you if there are any difficulties encountered and, and things of that nature relative to the audit, relative to management. If management was talking to other accounting firms because they didn't, they didn't agree with something that, that we felt as though was, was required to be done, those are all things that we're required to report to you. And the purpose of all of them is that if, if management is expressing some level of bias towards the financial statement, meaning, financial statements, meaning they're trying to make them better than they actually are, or look better than they actually are, or perhaps make them look worse than they actually are. It is the AICPA's belief that they will vet out through, through all of these classifications and categories. Now, there, there was nothing that, that we would be required or we were required to report to you, other than there is an attachment to that communication of all of the audit adjustments that were proposed by us during the course of the engagement for your review. So you're cognizant of, of where there were errors or where we, you know, we found corrections. And then the last slide is just our contact information. Well, I think we continue on there a little bit, but I, go ahead, I apologize, is our contact information. So you can feel free, any of you, to, to reach out to us directly. It's usually more efficient if it comes through the finance office or through the town manager's office, but if one of you call either Steve or I, we're, we're certainly going to pick up the phone.
Okay. I'd like to entertain other questions. Other questions from members of the council, are there any? Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, President Dixon. Just a couple of questions for you. On the consolidated balance sheet, there's sewer assessment receivables, which we spoke about a little earlier, 8.9 million. Is there any bad debt allowance, any kind of offset to that number?
Is there an allowance on that? I don't-
It's very small.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if there is, it's, it's, it's a relatively small, but there's, there's lien rights on those, so we wouldn't anticipate to see a big allowance.
We did have the line reading open that had about $50,000 and just tore it down. So I'm not really sure exactly what's going to happen with that.
Okay.
But that's just one of the examples I was thinking of.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask the question for conservative purposes. On page 37, there's a listing of funds with deficit balances. It comes to 1.3 million. And it says in the financials that the town expects to go up the bond to fund those. But you guys issued the statements, I think, toward 2021, and I don't think we actually went up to bond. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's, it's a required disclosure to disclose any, any funds that have a deficit fund balance that are not presented upfront in the financial statements. So they're in the roll-up schedules that are in the back. Typically, a deficit is going to get funded by one of three mechanisms. The issuance of debt typically, and, and normally, those, those are only going to be in capital project funds that are in deficit positions. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, the funds that are-
Twenty.
Okay.
I understand what you remember.
Yeah. If, if it's special revenue funds, then the likelihood is it's going to get, the, the deficit is going to get funded either through future revenue stream or through an appropriation of the general fund. I, I'll, I'll look at that disclosure tomorrow morning because it, it should be a little more robust than just issuance of debt.
Just wanted to call out. And then my last question. On the consolidated balance sheet, it shows internal balances and there was a total of $2,967,414 in governmental activities, but it was offset by business-type activities of the exact same amount.
Yeah.
Now, is that, is that general fund assets that every taxpayer paid going from the governmental activities to the sewer fund?
They're, I, I don't know if it's all general fund, but, but what they are is just inter-fund liabilities, which are extremely common. They get eliminated within, so that governmental activities column is all of your governmental funds. Within all of your governmental funds, there are due-to-due fronts going in, in, in all different directions. They all get eliminated. There could be the same thing going on if you had multiple business-type activities. They would all get eliminated, but when the governmental funds owe a business-type activity, some inter-fund, you know, liability, there's, there's an offsetting asset somewhere else. But they are, they are loans in nature, short-term, short-term borrowings in nature.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any questions?
Do any other members of the council have a question?
Just one more.
Mrs. Shockley?
Thank you. So on page 11 of your report, I'm just wondering, there are certain places where it seems like we should be pretty sure on what the revenue's going to be, but I wonder with general property taxes, and this might be a question for you, is it that people built houses or something was built and we got extra revenue that year that we weren't expecting or?
So are you talking about the budget to actual, that's $929,000 in the positive?
Yes. And I was also wondering about the investment income. That seems way higher.
So I, I mean, I wasn't there last year, but I speculate it was just not properly budgeted, or maybe it was, that's all I could say. I mean, I can't imagine that we have almost close to a million in more taxes than somehow it wasn't something to do with how it was budgeted. Because our collection rate is like 99%. So I, I can't speculate on how they budgeted it, I'm sorry.
I wonder if you assume a little less than that too. I mean, we do collect a high percentage.
Yeah, often in, in a budget process, you might assume a 97% correction rate and-
When she said that, that makes sense.
They could have done that. That's, that's probably right, sir, because we, we estimate in 99% because Monique does 99%.
In this income, I'm wondering, what did we do so much better? Did the market just do way better than we expected it to?
Yeah, I, I think the market, but, but that tends to be, again, if, if-
No, no.
If you're conservative in nature in setting your budget, like you don't, you really don't want to get crazy with that line item.
No, I agree.
So, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to check, just because they were pretty large numbers.
I think, I think Mr. Wazika, who was our interim town manager, has a question or a statement.
Every year, we see that substantial amount of increase in that tax revenue because of new properties that come online during that year that were not part of the original. And it's, it's been running $800,000, $900,000 in new profits built during the year. Taxes go and they get, get positive, but they weren't part of the original tax estimate of what we were bringing in. So that's special year occurring that happens in this year.
So are you talking about the paraded?
On paraded aspect, exactly.
New construction. Yeah.
But that's where we usually end up with that higher loss on the end. They weren't on, on the-
Which one?
On, on the 11th, because they came off, they came off line after.
That makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. Any other members of the council have a question? Mr. LeBlanc?
One last follow-up. We did have a ransomware attack. Is there any subsequent event footnotes or anything about that attack, just from a financial reporting risk perspective?
I don't think from a financial reporting perspective, I, I would, I, I would think I'd have a subsequent event in there if I knew you paid $2 million. You know, I, I might, you know, that's, that's something that I, I don't even, is that disclosed to us?
That wasn't been I think before.
I was going to say, was that 2021?
Yeah, I understand, but there's a footnote called a subsequent event footnote. If it's anything material, we are required to disclose said material events. So I just wanted to-
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. LeBlanc?
That's it.
Okay, any, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawson. Thank you, Mr. Gross. It was a pleasure having you with us this evening. We appreciate the PowerPoint presentation and the detail concerning our financial situation.
Okay, thank you for having us.
Some good news there. Thank you. Mr. Wazika?
I just have one question on the OPEB. Do you have a breakdown on that? On which side that was $27 million? How much was on school and how much was on health? That will be down or that will be reported? I think that's in the mail and reported that is probably down by Twitter. We can get it. We got the actual report.
Thank you. Please provide a, a copy to Mr. Marchand and Mr. Wazika. Thank you.
Hey, President Dixon.
Yes.
We're over an hour into the session and I think, I think what we had told people is we were going to try and get an initial public comment-
Yes.
-earlier, so may I make a motion to bring that forward before we proceed?
Yes, we certainly can do that. There's a motion to bring in public comment at this point in time. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. Okay, thank you. We'll now entertain any public comment. We'll now entertain any public comment. Is there anyone who is watching us via Zoom or anyone who is present in the audience who would like to make a public comment at this point in time? Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment. We don't see any hands raised at this point in time. Do you have the participant list up? And the attendee list? Can we see the attendee list? Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, I do not see any hands raised among the attendee list, so we will continue on with our agenda. Thank you. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Okay, agenda item C5, Coventry Finance Report for May 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2021. Ms. Mills, Finance Director, our reference pages are pages 17 to 22.
Hello. Attached is a budget update for May 2021. This update represents 91.67%.
Excuse me, Ms. Mills, is your microphone on?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to read? Attached is the budget update for May 2021. This update represents 91.67% of the current fiscal year. I've broken down the revenue and the expenditure bullets. They they haven't changed from the prior month. I don't know if there's any other questions.
On the state housing aid for the shortfall from the school maintenance requirement, is that now lost revenue? Is that money that has been spent and we will be receiving it?
So that's a complicated question right now. So we, the the school department submitted an emergency HVAC invoices to receive 479,000, of which 439 was the prior housing aid shortfall. It's been approved. The money has been wired into the Town of Coventry's operating fund. However, there is a regulation that I've already, I've talked to the town manager, Mr. Marchand. Apparently, the funds are to be transferred to the school department, and the town, it appears, is going to be short, the 439, and it's going to be given to the school. So this is where it is right now. We did receive the money, but it it looks like it's going to be in the the school department's hands instead of ours. And that's something that needs to be, Mr. Marchand can expand on that.
Yeah, I'll I'll just expand on the explanation that Lisa gave. There's a special provision that the General Assembly created for schools that were in a deficit and unable to make the maintenance expenses that were required. And so they made this provision that if they submitted the invoices directly to the state, the state would remit the state housing aid money to cover those invoices. Now, in our case, the Coventry Public Schools already paid their invoices. And when we asked them, so what does this mean? They said, huh, we didn't anticipate that. They don't really know. So the state, this, the state said, well, normally it would go right to the schools to cover the those, to pay those invoices. But if the invoices have already been paid, you know, the law says to give it to the schools because they were in that circumstance, and the town is out that housing aid.
So the school hadn't budgeted for the HVAC. They hadn't budgeted getting an additional $439,000. That wasn't part of the school's budget. So don't they now have a surplus?
So
And they're not supposed to?
So this is for actually FY '20. So they were short, not this FY '21, they were short 439,000 of submitting invoices of the 2% maintenance requirement by the state of Rhode Island to to maintain their schools so they do not fall apart, the basic requirements. They didn't meet the requirements. The state, in lieu of Town of Coventry would have lost the 439,000, and by their grace, they put it into an escrow fund to benefit the Town of Coventry upon later submission of invoices. However, those those invoices, once they're submitted, like Mr. Marchand said, they were supposed to pay the the vendors. I believe the vendors have been paid, but I believe I did talk to a state representative, and the money is, by all appearances, supposed to go to the school, even though the invoices are paid. So that's something we have to work out, because it seems like if they would have done the right thing at the, you know, at the right time, the town, the Town of Coventry would receive their full 439,000 of housing aid. Because it was after the fact, after, you know, a year later is funding these invoices, somehow they get the 439. It's how the state law is written, so.
Is the school allowed to transfer it?
Back to us, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
They, I'm sure they could if if they
Well, I just wonder if they had put the invoices in in order for the town to get its housing aid, which is, I believe, what happened.
Right.
Just putting it into the correct account seems like it would make sense. And I don't know if this is a conversation that has happened between the school.
I did have a discussion with Mr. Sands, and they're expecting the money. And so I think that management's going to have to talk about what the circumstances around that are. I did, when I did talk to the state representative, he stated that there's about 12 municipalities that are going to be short this coming year and might possibly fall into this circumstance. So I guess we have to think as a town how we're going to resolve this. So that's out of my purview.
I would like to know the outcome, though. I feel like this question's been being asked for months and months, and I, you know.
This has been raised since, yeah, since last summer. So, I mean, I think we've asked several times for a session with us in the school committee. How do we make that happen? But on this specific topic, on maintenance of effort, how do we have a session to review what what it means? Whether they're hitting it?
So so I think there's two parts. One is, this is the outcome. The state did release the state housing aid, but under the requirement that it go directly to the school. The second piece is, the school has made representations in every meeting that they intend to comply with their maintenance requirement, and they, it's it's part of their budget this year. Beyond that, I'm not sure where else to go with the conversation, other than with them receiving the 439,000. That would be a conversation between the school committee and the town council as to the expectations of how that those funds are to be used.
Okay, so it's it seems like an action item on our part is to try to arrange either an upper leadership meeting or a council's school committee meeting so that we could discuss this issue. I would prefer to start at an upper leadership meeting and see where we go from there. And if we can't get a resolution, then bring it out to a public session.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mrs. Mills regarding this report?
President.
Yes, Mr. LeBlanc.
Mr. Gross, can you just remind me? I'm looking at the monthly budget to actual report, executive summary, May 31st. The other departments line item, the budget was 656,000, but for the current period through May, it's showing up as 2.2 million. What's driving that?
So you're looking at the revenue, correct?
It's page 18 out of 37 of a document.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I don't have it's, so that's in the, so the the revenue, the other income is the bullet number two, 2.3 with the cares? Hold on, hold on, I gotta find out where you are. I'm sorry.
So I'm in total municipal revenue. Better line down. So it's not the state aid and then general
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I see it.
Yep.
1.45388. Is the actual? And the budget is 276?
Nope. I'm looking at a budget column that's showing 656,000 and an actual of 2.2 million for other departments.
Is some portion wet? On the next page, it says, there's a miscellaneous line here.
There's a miscellaneous line under other departments, and it says it includes the wet funds, so is that
Right, but that's, I just made of that statement. Is that the line item? You said no, though.
He's on page
He's on page 18.
18. Under total property taxes, I believe it's the third item that says other departments.
Correct. And it's just, it's off by 337%.
Okay, hold on. Sorry. I still can't find it. 337, other departments. Okay, so if we go to the detail on the revenue page of the other departments, and that shows the two, two, so if you go to the second page of the other departments, can you see the revenue of 2.2?
Yes.
Okay, so the miscellaneous is the wet settlement of 765332, has bulleted on the summary of the memo.
So that goes to 900.
Yep. And also, there is
So we're still talking about close to 100,000?
Yeah, so well, I'm sure there's other miscellaneous I would have to, like, I would have to dig other than
Well, the the actuals for police and building inspector and planning department were all very high, higher than expected last year.
And I think it stems back to, I mean, I can't speculate on how they budget revenue and, like Ronald had stated, that they probably tend to be conservative on the revenue, which is, it's not a bad thing. So I couldn't speculate, you know, what, where it is, but, I mean, I can, I could dig into, give you a further detail on the differences.
I would appreciate it.
No worries. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions by members of the council?
I do have one more.
Mrs. Shockley?
Thank you. I just want to check, just based on your memo once again. So are we down 1.16 million in COVID money that we're expecting? Like, as far as discussion of how to spend COVID is 1.168 million now going towards the motor vehicle excise that we were expecting?
Yes, so if the difference between the 2.3 in COVID federal cares funding that we received and the 1.1 that the state of Rhode Island took it away, on the other hand, leads us to 1.2 million net increase.
All right, so it does take away from what we thought we had for COVID money.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, I just have one quick question. On page 20 of 37, under the section Debt Service, underneath the heading Total Municipal Expenditures, could you just refresh our memory about, are these bonds that we're paying off the principal and interest, which comes to two? Okay, how many bonds are we actually paying off right now? I mean, I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
All right. I don't have the number in front of me, but we have 41 million in bonds.
41 million in bonds.
We have 10, 10 more years on the school bonds, and there's the police station, which is a substantial one. But I don't know all the others off the top of my head, but
Okay, that just gives me a general idea. So it's $41 million in bonds that we're working our way through?
As of 6/31/20, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Mills.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item Agenda C6, Mr. Wazika, administrative officer who will present his monthly update. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, counsel. It's a little awkward for me to, I'm actually going home before a meeting. I haven't done that in over three years. It's kind of interesting. I enjoy it. First, I'll start with the Johnson's Pond. I'm going to be covering that and the wind turbines. You're noticing the reports that I've given you. There's a bunch of history on the turbines, which I have provided in the past. In some cases, I've got some new data in there for the the actual recording of the shutdowns, and that's in in chart form, and that's from May 1st up until yesterday. But the Johnson's Pond, as far as that goes, since the last incident of the storm and the issue related to that, where the attempt was made to bring the bring the water level down, that level has been brought back up, compliments of our our legal team and the work we did to make sure that they were in compliance. Since then, we have maintained weight on or slightly above, slightly below full spillway level. As of this morning, we're at an inch and a half below spillway level. We're at 69.7 CFS that's flowing down at the USGA monitoring site, which is in compliance with the ordinance or with the lease, the lease calls for 40 CFS. But you have to do a whole mathematical calculation based on organic growth in the river, and it has an effect on it, and it's right in line with that. When you take into account the way we have to do it, it equates down to the 40 CFS that they're supposed to be at. So they're in compliance. We've got rain coming in on Wednesday, so we should be back to full spillway or above after Wednesday or Thursday. So we're right in line. They're doing good. The ponds are up. I haven't heard any complaints from anybody. Everybody seems to be happy on that bottom. There's a lot of other issues involving this, but they'll be in play as things move forward. But as far as compliance with water levels, flow rates, everything is where it belongs. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Not a, not a question, but more of just a big thank you to you and our legal counsel for everyone, you know, involved quickly getting around the issue, getting us into court, and having us for bringing in the right experts. It's very important that we that we show and we tell our residents the things that are important to us, and maintaining the the appropriate water levels and ensuring adherence to the lease has been a priority of the council. I know it can be sometimes hard for our residents to see what happens in the background, but it is a priority, allocated resources to this, funds to this, and thank you for your diligence and making sure that we bring this
That's what you pay us for.
And thank you, Mr. Wazika, because during the critical period, you were posting daily reports, even videos, and on the website, and those are easily distributed via social
I wanted people to see where it was. I didn't want to just hear it. I wanted to see it. And then you get to hear it coming over the waterfalls. I thought that was a very pretty sight. Anybody wants to go see it? It's beautiful. So, yeah, so that's maintaining. I'm happy where we are, and we've got another slightly over two months to maintain that 40 in the spillway level, and hopefully we will be at that level as long as we get sufficient rain and we don't have a major issue.
Well, the daily reports were very comprehensive, very detailed, and it was easy for members of the council to use them for social networking purposes or to keep the public informed. So thank you very much for your diligence to do that. And there was a lot of weekend work, too.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. LeBlanc?
So after this most recent legal battle, if there's another storm in two weeks from now, can we have a replay, or are they not allowed?
I I would prefer not to get into whether we can have a, they can have a replay or not. All I will say is that there was an order from the judge, and there was an agreement with them, with the judge. So I don't want to go any further on that. Unless you feel as though you could, Mr. Gorman?
We just take every situation as it comes. So I hate to make predictions.
Never say never.
We, we think that the right result was reached last time by the judge, once he had all the information that he needed, and I hope that doesn't change. Thank you.
Other questions for members of the council? Okay, continuing on with your detailed report here.
Okay, as far as on the wind turbines, one of the questions came up to me from one of the council members in reference to the relationships that the various companies have involving these turbines. We, the Town of Coventry, had hired a company called Epsilon to do an analysis and an estimate report based on 900 and
86.
986 points, which are 986 different pieces of property, houses on those properties on 986 points, which are 986 different pieces of property, houses on those properties on flicker. During that Epsilon report, they determined that there were two, there were two pieces of property that would come in excess of the 30 hours per year. The one on Victory Highway, which everyone is familiar with, and the other one, which was a major one, was going to be about 99 hours a year. Fortunately, it's a vacant building owned by the, by the town, and it's on a Pacillo pig farm. So that one is off of it. But Epsilon models everything based on software called WindPro, which takes into account the historic norms of everything. Again, like I said, I've detailed all of this in the past. I'm just going to go over it quickly with everyone in case there's anybody. So Epsilon was hired by the town. Epsilon has absolutely no contact with wind energy development. It has no contact with North Tech, which is the company that built and provided the monitoring system that WED purchased. They have no business relationship, other than North Tech was a vendor of, uh, wind energy development. Same thing with Vences, who is a manufacturer of those wind turbines. They have no con, they have no business relationship with North Tech, which is, by the way, a German company. The, the equipment was built out there, calibrated out there, and set up for all of our GPS points of all of the properties. So that's been monitoring. I was asked by the council to look into getting a company to monitor those results. I've contacted a number of companies, and I can't find a one that wants to monitor the results. They're willing to do exactly what Epsilon did, which is give us an estimate on what the, what the projected flicker would be at any given point. My only suggestion would be that we may want to hire either Epsilon or another company to take that point, which is 287, receptor 287, which is the Victory Highway receptor, and have them give us a long-term, year-to-year daily projection of what they're anticipating at that. Their totals came out to like 39.9 hours a year is what they were projecting, that the flicker would be at that one point. So about nine and a half hours is over and above the 30 hours that are allowed. Currently, if you go back to the gra, uh, the chart on the back of the report that I've given you, you'll see the three months' worth. They have shut down the system at this point, 5.5 hours, 19 different times to get to that 5.5 hours. Those shutdowns will continue. They've tried to set the system so it shuts it down during the summer hours, having the most beneficial effect to the resident of point 287. So that's where that is. But nobody wants to take on the role that I've been able to find, and I'll keep looking for the rest of my time, to try and find a company that's willing to do that. Or if the council would like, like I said, I will get, I will get a long-term, uh, projection for that one point of light and see what they're projecting on a daily basis out at that property, if you'd like that. Just to have a better idea of what should be going on, what, what, what's going on versus what is being claimed is going on at that, on that one property. But I want to emphasize that none of these companies that are involved in any aspects of this have any other kind of business relationship, close business relationship with each other. They're all separate. They're all entities on themselves. North Tech is actually a, a single owner on that. He's got about 35 employees. They've been doing this. They build these monitoring devices they used extensively throughout Europe, when, typically in places where they're in a congested area to make sure and monitor and shut down the turb, turbines, turbines, uh, if they're going to exceed that recommended 30 hours.
Mr. Wazika, um, last week I did speak to you and ask you to give us, uh, the council a little more detailed information, which you provided on these first two pages. So I greatly appreciate it. But my, my question to you is processed. How is this data coming to you? And is it coming into the town? Are you looking at the monitoring units?
I get a, I get a report. I get a report from wind energy development, monthly, uh, listing, uh, listing the, the units. What you see there in that, in that graph, in that chart.
Yes.
Is actually a piece of the information that's sent to me. There's a lot of other fields that are in there that I've eliminated that aren't pertinent to the shutdown aspects of it. So they're monitoring all of that, that they, they get, that's, that's relayed to me. Could they be messing with the, with the data? The report comes directly out of their system. I mean, so I'm not, I do not think that they are. I am satisfied that what they're providing is accurate. It's out of the system. I've seen the data that's coming to me. I mean, I could go there and, and request to see it live if that would, uh, make the council feel better, and I'll get a dump myself in front of me and, and do it that way if that, if they'd like, so I can just confirm. But I have no, I have no doubts that they are providing the accurate information that they're getting.
So through our conversation, I understand that there is one monitoring unit which is actually sensing what is happening among six or seven of those turbines?
Correct, correct. There's, there's a couple of different monitoring units that are on two different, uh, two different groups of, uh, of turbines. And you'll see in the map, you'll see the two different groups, and they monitor those, and it speaks to each other. And that's when it, that's when it decides, based on the anticipated, uh, anticipated flicker that will be generated on that point, 287. It's primarily from, I believe it's, uh, it's turbine 5A, if I'm not mistaken off the top of my head, is the one that's providing, it's causing that excess over the 30 hours. So that's the one, instead of having all different ones shut down, they've got it shutting down on that one to ensure that they're getting less than the 30 hours of flicker.
So when we look at this graph, we see numbering for WED 1, WED 2A, et cetera. We see yellow lines, orange lines, red lines. Just explain what that means.
I don't have any red lines or yellow lines on. Well, that's on the document. That's on the, oh, on that.
Yeah.
That line, those are the areas where, that are receiving the most flicker. If you look, I can provide you a better, a better copy of this. There's a graph on, on, or a, what do you call it, up on the top, that shows how much is in those, each of those zones. So the, the yellow, uh, the, the, the colored areas indicate, uh, like, red is the, the worst, as it goes all the way out to the, the blue, and that is the one that receives the least amount of flicker during the course of it. So these are the anticipated flicker zones based on Epsilon's evaluation of those points, the GPS locations, as well as the sightings of each of those wind turbines.
And so the little white dots represent some home?
Every one of those, yeah, that, that's not all of the dots, but that's, every dot you see is a, is a home, is a home.
Is a home.
Is a building, yep.
There's one within that yellow area, I see.
Yep.
And, and then there's another one.
There's one inside the red, that's ours, and there's one inside the yellow, and that is, uh, that's point 287.
Okay, thank you.
Victory Highway. Yes, ma'am?
So I guess I'm just at the point with this where I don't disbelieve the data. I just, it seems to be the equivalent of hitting someone, and when they say, "Ow," you're telling them it didn't hurt, like, you didn't hit them that hard. We have a group of people who seem to have been very happy in their homes before, and now they are miserable. Is there anything we can do? Is there any way we can change something that we've done in the past? Is 30 hours too many hours? I, I just feel as if there's a group of citizens who are unhappy with their homes in Coventry now, based on these wind turbines. And I'm wondering what we can do.
I, uh, again, just dealing with my own, my own contacts with the various people, I've been contacted by a handful of people, that's it. I've gone out there myself on, on occasions to speak to some of the neighbors, to ask how they are. There's a business out there, Stamp Farm. I've gone in there and I've spoken to them. I've asked them, and they're white under, you know, and they, they explain, yeah, they get the flicker once in a while. They don't hear any noise. There's nothing there. As far as what we can do going forward, I believe Mr. Mashand is going to have something additional for you on that. We've had an analysis done. I believe I provided that already to you in the past from McGilvery, uh, Steve McGilvery, the attorney that was handling all of this. And, uh, at this point, basically, there is, there is nothing else we can do except make sure they're in compliance with the 30 hours, which, by the way, is the, the norm across, across the world in most, most locations. 30 hours is the limit that's allowed just about everywhere on, or on the research that I've done. There are a couple of countries that are, that are trying to reduce it down to a lower amount, a lower number, but the, the norm is 30. That's the one that the state's going with in Rhode Island. I don't know where it came up with on how we went to that. My only assumption is that we were developing th, these agreements with WED initially back in 13 and 14. It was based on the, that state recommended number of the 30 hours.
Mr. Wazika, we will be having an agenda item relating to this in our meeting, um, in August. And I also believe that you'll be here because you will be given a monthly report. So I'm hoping that you'll bring this data back again and be available to answer any more, answer any more questions. Okay?
I will, I will be here until August 27th, ma'am.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure our meeting is before August 27th, but it is planned, yes.
Thank you.
We look forward to.
I will, uh, I will, I will come. In the meantime, between now and then, I will make arrangements to go down and see the data are actually getting physically dumped from the system. So I can say with my own eye, I can, you know, reassure you all that I've seen what's coming out of there, and it does match up to what they've been giving us.
Thank you.
President Dixon, just one question. Sorry if I missed this, Mr. Wazika. What was the reason why all these other vendors wouldn't perform the monitoring?
They don't do that. They don't monitor.
Don't, it's not a service.
They don't monitor, no. That's why you buy this equipment. You buy these systems, and the, the systems are self-monitoring, is what they're designed to do. Shut down, they shut down for, for flicker, for flicker control based on the, the WindPro data that's, that's done. And they're also designed to shut down in the event of flocks of birds, geese, and other things to prevent damage to them, as well as damage to the, uh, to the waterfall. So that's what they're designed for, but they don't, they, everybody I call, nope, we don't monitor them. We don't do it. I'll give you another report. We'll do one like Epsilon, if you'd like to, to cross-check, to make sure what you got from Epsilon is accurate and thorough. We could do that. Or, like I said, the other option I, I'd like to throw out there is, I can contact either Epsilon or another company and get that particular point with a year or two's worth of actual data to see how that compares and see if we are getting it. Because that's the only one in viol, that was, was in violation. Global agreement that was signed with the WED in, and, uh, wind energy development last year mandated that they have to go, they, they are living within the 30 hours. And that's why the monitoring system is in place, why it's shutting down, and why it's doing what it's doing. But anything less than that, they're in compliance with our ordinances. That's the problem. That's what it says. As far as changing that now, that's a, that's a, that's a question for an attorney. It's not mine. And I don't know if you'd be allowed to, and it would have an effect. They were, they were licensed under this. So I don't know if you could even do that at this point.
Mrs. Lima, you have a question?
Yes, so, um, the folks that are pretty vocal about this, are we just assuming that they're seeing these, the, the agendas that are coming up that have these agenda items on them? Or are we gonna, are we making an effort to let them know it's coming up on an agenda? Or?
They, they know, um, the key people do know that there will be an agenda item in August. I have so notified them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
By the way, Miss LeBlanc, uh, that's a no on that contract. They won't give it to you. The question you asked about solar, uh, they won't give it to me. It's not, it's with a private company. It's not a municipality in McRanster.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Agenda Item C7, Mr. McGee will present the Department of Public Works sanitation report. Mr. McGee?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see what you all look like in, in person together.
We're good-looking, aren't we? Do you want us to stand up? Yes, we are all fully.
We have some physician trainings. We can.
Yes. Okay. Mr., um, McGee, does the town clerk have this so she could post this on the website?
She does.
She does. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I was asked to put this report together at the last minute, and we tried to get the information to you that, uh, relates to the sanitation department. And I'll just read through the report that I worked on today. "The Town of Coventry converted to an automated trash recycling program in 20, October of 2016. One of the main driving factors was to reduce the workman's comp injury rate among sanitation driver collectors. Since the new program was put in place, zero workman's comp claims have been filed for the trash recycle collection. The only workman's comp claim in the sanitation department has been for a back injury due to overloaded yard waste bag." Sure. There were approximately six totaling almost $70,000 in claims.
In what time period?
One year. Yeah, it was, it was a lot. They were all picking up by bins and picking up by each piece. Over $70,000. I didn't go back any further than that, so. "In the attached 2020 municipal summer report, it shows that the town collected 11,536 tons of municipal waste. With the addition of the recyclable materials, that total waste generated equal 18,224 tons. The total was 0.84 tons per household, below the state average of 0.98 tons per ha, household. Our recycling, our MRF center achieved a 25.9% diversion rate compared to the state average of 21.7%. The overall division, division rate for the Town of Coventry was 36.7% as compared to the state's rate of 34%. The town is also able to calculate the curbside recycling rate on a weekly by route and truck, which averages 42.25%. What happens is, once the curbside, we can find out how many tons of recycled-based trash, but when we factor in the transfer station, that's where it lowers our percentage rates towards that, because we've got all the, there was a little bit of recycling there, but we have a lot of waste that's collected in the, by the 40-yard containers. Several additional recycling statistics include the total transfer station bulk trash was 1,587.82 tons. The total transfer station bulk recycling collection was 60.92 tons. The total scrap iron collected was 220,700 pounds, or 110.35 tons. Total tires collected for that year was 645 tires. Total waste oil collected was 7,725 gallons. And the total cardboard collected from the schools and town buildings was 43,560 pounds, or 21.78 tons. The Town of Coventry Municipal Solid Waste Cap for '21 was 11,384 tons, which we exceeded by 301.83 tons, at an additional cost of $9,960.39. Most of the costs, the, the cause of this was, again, we all remember where everybody was cooped up in COVID, so everybody did a lot of house cleanouts, and you, you, a lot of yard waste, a lot of, the yard work was done. So it increased our amount, but it cost us the, the commercial rate, which was $87 a ton, when we exceeded our cap. So that's why it's almost $10,000 that we had to spend extra just for the disposal. We, with our recycling work that we've been doing, we have not been exceeding, this is the first year in the last five years that I can recall, that we haven't exceeded. The seasonally adjusted solid waste cap for 2022 is 12,235 tons. In 2021, the Town of Coventry yard waste cap was 908 tons. We borrowed from surrounding communities 454 tons, uh, which is our maximum allowable to transfer, for a total tonnage of 1,362 tons. In 2021, the town disposed of 1,998.56 tons of yard waste, which exceeded our cap by 636.56 tons. And the cost to the town was $15,914 to just dispose of the yard waste that exceeded our cap. That did not include the transportation of the, of that yard waste to the, um, resource recovery. In 20, our yard waste cap for 2022 is 913 tons. We have already borrowed from surrounding communities 417 tons of an allowable 456.5 tons to transfer. We're still working on the balance. Yearly, we exceed the yard waste caps with an average disposal of 15,000 to 20,000 per year, not including transportation. This is the main reason this department has been requesting authorization to construct a yard waste collection facility, but to no avail. Yes?
Uh, from surrounding communities? Borrowed from surrounding communities? I don't understand that.
I call and they give us their allotment. For the last seven years, some communities don't use their yard waste.
Oh, they don't? Okay.
And so I asked out maximize how much we were allowed, which is only 50% of what our allotted cap is. And I, every year I try to get, try to get more, but they won't give me more. So we get, we maximize it out and we'll get to 454 tons.
So you're able to borrow, is that like free of charge?
Yeah, there's no charge for that, just.
So it's just good.
Misdirectors to, to misdirectors, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So is the reason for the lack of being able to build a facility at like a not in my backyard sort of thing or?
Well, we haven't gotten that far. We'd never get beyond the council.
Well, I, so I would just like to say that there was a gentleman driving around my neighborhood taking yard waste and I asked him why, because I couldn't figure out why. And he owns a Christmas tree farm and he uses it to put around the bases of the trees. So I don't know if there's a way to partner with establishments like that. I believe Coventry has a Christmas tree farm here. But regardless, just something to put out there that ours is available for the taking if the Christmas tree farms want it. The gentleman, like I said, was just taking it from people's front steps.
That's the first I've heard of that, I guess. Okay, we'll check it in.
President Dixon, so what is a yard waste collection facility? Are you taking it and putting it somewhere and doing controlled burn to get rid of it or what, what does that look like?
We allow it to compost and once it composts, we were able to create a product that we would then be able to give back to the community and utilize it for town use. We actually had Rhode Island, excuse me, Roger Williams University did a study with us two years ago. The facility that we have, the town-owned facility up by the, off of Reed Schoolhouse Road, near the, near National Gardens Facility. And we had the ability to do a three-part facility. One is to develop a demolition storage when we have a natural disaster. FEMA requires us to be able to put it all in one place so they could actually itemize what they're going to give it to us. So it's there for a short amount of time, but we have, have, have to have a place to put it. Public Works also needs a storage yard for some of our materials. We have extra sand and gravel, stone. We're, we're busting at the seams here and we just don't have enough room that we need. That would have a spot there also so that we could bring material there and have it stored in larger quantities and also the yard waste and composting. The whole plan is detailed and I'd be more than happy, I think Mr. Marshant has.
Yeah, I'd be interested to take a look.
Yeah, we, we have, I'd be more than happy to, I'm glad to hear somebody's actually thinking about it, so.
And is it something where we could generate revenue through it? Where we could charge neighboring towns if they wanted to dump their yard waste with us or how does that work?
I, I would start with the revenue savings of not hauling it to the dump.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand.
It's the big piece. I, I've seen it operated in many other towns and a lot of the times you're just giving away the mulch to your residents. You might charge non-residents. I've seen lots of different ways of doing it. Sometimes you charge landscapers to dump larger loads, but you might be limited on how much you can actually take because grass clippings are high in nitrates and nitrites and nitrogen. And so you can't compost it. If you get too much grass, you need a nice mix of leaves and mulch and bark and, and wood. So however that shakes out, we can optimize it. And, you know, in Mannheim, Pennsylvania, they actually had a partnership with a landscaping company that would chip all their brush for them and take however much of it away. And then the remaining chips were used by the town to, to compost. So it sounds like with Christmas tree farms and landscapers, there may be a lot of opportunities there for either cost savings or revenue opportunities.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
So I don't think you're going to like my question.
Okay.
Why are we picking up people's yard waste? So for example, I hear a bunch of complaints about, oh, I never know when they're going to come pick it up. It's costing us money. It looks like the one claim that was raised was from a yard waste bag that had something too heavy in it. So, I mean, I'm, I'm open to talking about the other things. I'm just, I'm just wondering why are we in the yard waste business?
I'm going to go back historically, before my time, before 2013, we have been collecting yard waste. It is an additional service. It's not mandated. What happens is our collectors are out collecting their trash and recycling. When they finish around 12 to 1 o'clock, they then go to collect yard waste. But if they get to a stop that has 100 bags and they end by, they have to end by 2:30 to get back here to fuel up and be ready for the day because their day ends at 3 o'clock. They may only get one street, so they have to go back the next week and start where they left off. So people say, well, you, you didn't get my yard waste. Well, we only have a certain amount of time to do it with so many trucks. Sometimes we don't have the trucks available because of breakdowns or people that call out. So they have just enough time to collect their yard waste. I mean, they collect their trash and recycling and that takes them right to 2:30 and they don't have time to get yard waste. So it's, it's an issue. It's the bane of my existence. If it wasn't for yard waste, my, my job would be easy. But it's all about yard waste and unless we have more, and I'm not asking you for, for more staff, but if we had two people that were dedicated on a weekly basis just to collect yard waste, we could do this and that and get rid of the complaints. But we don't. You know, I'll explain a little bit in, in, towards the end here, how many people we actually have staffing the sanitation department. But if the council says no more yard waste, you won't get an argument from me.
So I, I would be, I'd be open to hearing more about some of the, the questions earlier about, you know, could we, could we have a revenue source from this? I'm, I'm open to hearing about that, but I, I would also like to have something on the alternative side to say if we got rid of this, what would the cost savings be in people, maintenance? I mean, I, I said the word complaint because I don't know what else to call it, but you know, someone says, oh, it didn't get picked up this week. You know, it'll, it'll get picked up the next week, but that's.
And sometimes it may be two or three weeks before they get, get around to, depending on the quantity that they're picking up at all locations.
I would just be interested to know what the, the possible cost savings of not picking it up would be and possibly having that as an item, just, just to counteract against, you know, whatever we're looking at as a possible.
This sounds, this sounds like a future agenda item, but the alternative is if the yard waste is not picked up, what are people going to do with this yard waste? We might find it along the roadside. It could be all kinds of places, but.
In District One, yeah. Let me say during the pandemic, when we actually had to close, when we were working on half shifts from that March to June timeframe, the outcry was, was more towards yard waste collection because we didn't have the staff to do it, to pick it up or, you know, or be able to handle it here. When we opened up for those Saturdays, we had cars all the way to Reed Schoolhouse Road every single Saturday and 50% was yard waste. So we had to have two drivers just hauling boxes to the resource recovery on those Saturdays just for yard waste. So there's a need in the town, but they've got to fund it and be able to say, okay.
Bingo.
Give us a location for us.
If they want it, we, we have to allocate for it, right?
That's exactly.
Another discussion.
Specifically, you know, Mr. McGee talked to me about this a month or two ago as part of the budget process and he shared with me the research study and the PowerPoint done by University of Rhode Island. And this is bookmarked for the strategic planning retreat. Because this, I think there's a lot of strategic planning elements as to whether you cut the service, invest in the service, is it a revenue generator, is it a cost center? And depending on what direction the town council wants to go as a policy in service to the residents will determine what we do. So we'll prepare a, an analysis, we'll do the, the costs and the benefits and the projections and we can discuss it at that time.
And Mrs. Lima, I just want to respond to a statement that you made. Mr. McGee and his team did make many presentations about the potential of a, a site off Reed Schoolhouse Road and the neighbors were very opposed to it and they did come to speak. And the town council voted against that proposal. So just to give you an update, that doesn't mean that it cannot come back again. Another site cannot be presented. At one point, a site off Piggy Lane had been presented as a potential compost site. So Mr. McGee has made many efforts to find places where some of this yard waste might be placed and perhaps be a revenue generator in some way. So as Mr. Marshant said, it's a question for another day.
Yes, thank you for the history and backstory on that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGee?
Yep, just to complete the last part of the report. The Furniture Bank has been very successful by repurposing gently used furniture for use by Coventry residents. The Furniture Bank was able to divert 6,600 pounds from our waste stream this past year. This allows residents to donate furniture and for residents in need to be able to acquire gently used furniture. There is never a cost to the residents for the furniture. The department is about to announce a grand opening of the Bicycle Recycle Bank on August 4th at our transfer station. This announcement and invitation will be sent out this week. The Bicycle Recycle Bank will enable a resident who has outgrown their bicycle to donate a bicycle in good condition and acquire a bicycle that fits their size. Once again, we will be diverting disposal from our waste stream and providing a service to our residents. There is never a cost to the resident for their bicycle, but donations would always be acceptable to the bike bank to purchase how much to be able to give to the, whoever the children are. This department is staffed by 10 driver collectors for trash and recycling, yard waste collection and bulk item collection. There is one foreman who also delivers the containers to the landfill and there was one recycling coordinator who performs waste assessments and inspections, records the sanitation totals and reports and schedules resident bulk item pickups, assists at the counter and works as part of the Public Works office staff. Please keep in mind that totals for the 2021 fiscal year are skewed due to the COVID pandemic. There are more residents at home performing more household cleanouts, more yard work and takeout dining and all these items worked to increase our totals during this trying time. And attached to the report are the reports from Resource Recovery. These are not generated by us. We've highlighted the Coventry numbers so you can see exactly what we've referenced in this report. And if you have any further questions, I feel free to, to ask.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Marshant had said that this, that this, that this topic will be on a strategic planning discussion. So we will be revisiting this item again.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Certainly, Mr. LeBlanc.
Do you happen to keep track of the number of households that actually do provide or put yard waste bags?
No, it changes on a weekly basis. Like I, I have never put a yard waste bag out.
If we're going to take it away, there's only so much touch points that we have with residents.
True.
And that might be, that and trash might be the only one. So if it's a large number, we might want to consider not getting rid of it. But it sounds like we might have to use the radar because we don't track that.
There's no way to track it. So the drivers just would not have the ability to do that and say who has and how many bags are at each location, so.
You could just get an estimate from.
Sure, we can work on that. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGee. Agenda item E1, Discussion Action, Town Council to Start a Charter Review Commission. The last commission of the council that the council authorized had a very late start. It took three months to recruit the nine people needed to start the commission. The purpose of the commission will be to review feedback from department heads and our manager and staff and council members about recommended changes to the charter. The commission will have a tentative start date, I would expect of perhaps October 1st, 2021. And hopefully will complete its work by February 2021 with the recommendations to the council coming in. The council will then review all the recommendations and vote to determine item by item, recommendation by recommendation, what will go before the vote is in a referendum. We are very fortunate that the chairperson of the Charter Review Commission, the last one, is our own council member, Mrs. Shockley. And so she had the experience of charting the course for this, this committee. And she had a very short timeframe and I'm sure that she can give many helpful recommendations concerning how a charter commission will, will work very efficiently and effectively. And they did, they did a very good job. So the question is this, do we have a motion to activate a charter review commission? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, roll call, vote. Madam Clerk.
Hillary Shockley?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes. Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Item E2, Discussion and/or Action on Operations Assessment for an Audit and a Community Survey. Mr. Marshant, your comments, please.
This afternoon, I met with President Dixon, Chairman Patnott and Superintendent Levis. And we talked about coordinating an effort to do an operations assessment or performance audit. And we discussed the kind of what we want to do first is gather the criteria of what we hope to accomplish in such an assessment and audit to build an RFP so that we can bring back some quotes and proposals from diverse firms that are experienced in doing performance assessments for the school environment as well as the town environment. I, I shared with them the preliminary quote we received from our auditors, Clifton Larson. And they shared with us copies of performance reports that had been done previously in Smithfield and President Dixon presented one from Westerly. And there were some differences in terms of the scope and the intent. Some were very specifically driven by guiding questions of what the concerns were. In the case of Smithfield, there was a perception that the, or a concern that the school was asking for a sizable amount of money. The concern was that they didn't need it or weren't managing their funds well. And the report determined that they really did have greater than anticipated needs. With Westerly, it was a, a slightly different look at the staffing and the allocation of resources. It was less financial and more administrative. So whereas our auditor's presentation had a strong emphasis on financial controls, staffing, allocation of resources, but also went on to look at the other aspects of process, coordination, communication and functionality. So we're going to work together. We left them with some assignments to find out who the successor company is of the ones that originally did the Smithfield report and to see if they have a copy of the RFP for that Smithfield study. They're going to be looking at other communities in Rhode Island or for other school assessments that have been done to see if they can give us any other references for firms we might like to work with. And I'm going to be working with finance to research just RFPs for such services generally. I found one robust model for a community in Maryland. And there's more we can look up, but really what I'd like to get from the town council is kind of begin with the end in mind. What answers would you like to get from the performance audit? What is it? What questions do you want to have answered?
Ms. Ludwig?
So if we're able to, if we're able to send you some of the, the scope or intent or questions, by when would you need that before you send out the RFP?
We have a, we have a follow-up meeting with Mrs. Patnott and Superintendent Levis in two weeks. So if we could get that information within a couple of weeks, then Mr. Marshant would be prepared to discuss the questions that you have at that time or suggestions that you have.
Okay, because the reason that I ask is I know these things take time to go out for the RFP and then decide on anybody who comes back and we actually have to perform it and then we have to get the results from it. So I'm just thinking ahead a little bit. Several of us have talked about doing this type of review in advance of the next budget season in May and June time for next year.
So to put out a conceptual timeframe, our goal is, like President Dixon said, is to meet with the, with the school and twice before the next town council meeting. And by the next town council meeting, hopefully we'll be able to put together a draft RFP that the town council can review and give input on since this is largely a town council-driven priority. It was, I know it was a campaign pledge for several of you. And so I think you should have the ultimate say in what the RFP looks like and what you're going out for. And once I get the direction from the town council about the RFP package, we'll immediately advertise that hopefully following the August 23rd meeting. And we could get responses back in time for the second meeting in September. And when you release the contract, at least the models we've looked at, both of them looked like they were about a six-week study period followed by a report. So give two months, we should have plenty of time and some wiggle room. If it doesn't start until October or as late as January, we could still get results back in time for budgeting, but the sooner the better.
Thank you. Any other questions by members of the council? Mr. LeBlanc?
So I, I certainly believe that the performance audit is necessary. Just so everybody's aware, they examine if funds are spent wisely and if programs achieve their intended purpose. They look at staffing, employee compensation, program results, contract management and such things like that. I think all of that is extremely important and I certainly would be in favor of us approving such, of an audit.
So could you just please send those comments to Mr. Marshant so he could collect comments for all of us and he could put it in one, in one document to share?
Sure.
I would appreciate that. Mrs. Lima? I would appreciate that. Mrs. Lima?
Yes, thank you. Previously, in meetings, we've talked about wanting to be transparent with the school and making sure they're bought into this. In your in your meetings, I don't know if you can discuss any of this, but was there any potential portion of scope that they were they might have said they didn't want touched? Or just are they open? Are they an open book? Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, I had asked for specifics on what they were looking for. And they they didn't really give any specifics at this time. They'd like to take time to go back and discuss it with the other members of the school committee. And so that's why we're giving some time before we meet next. And that they will provide more specifics. Their their biggest concern that came out was that the study be performed by competent experts familiar with the school environment using national standards so that we're not taking random measures out of context. They were very concerned about it being done right by a qualified entity.
Yeah, and I I definitely want to echo the sentiments that I'm absolutely in favor of this. And I would just ask to make sure that we move on timeline appropriately and we have something to work with for the budget season. If we could get any and all materials in advance as possible ahead of these council meetings where we're going to be making decisions, so we're ready to go and we don't have to table it all, that'd be great. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments by members of the council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Marshon. We do have.
I had a the second item was the community survey.
Yes.
And that I I got a proposal from the national firm. And I disseminated it to the town council. And the discussion last month or the last meeting was that perhaps I should go out for an RFP or look for a local firm. I reached out to the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns and asked for referrals for local survey consultants. And I have not received any callback or any information. So I'm not familiar still with any locally available research firms that could help with that.
Mrs. Shockley?
I could try to get you a name. The Employees Retirement System did a survey of its membership and used a professor at Brown who did research on that sort of thing. So it could at least be a resource to see if they they're still doing that type of research, if that would be something we'd be interested in.
Sure. So my question of the council would be that, given the timing, if we move forward with this survey now with this national research firm, we know we're comparing on a same benchmark with national surveys across all cities in the United States. And it's very consistent, very well-vetted, very experienced. And 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 we it's basically off the shelf. We can implement it in the next two months and have results in October in order to inform the strategic planning session we're talking about in November. If I'm going to work with a local professor, I do expect that timeframe to be more of a six-to-nine-month prepare preparation and development of a survey tool that's more customized and more specific to Coventry, but it won't be available in time for the budget or the strategic planning session.
And the other aspect of the proposal that Mr. Marshon has allows for the addition of questions relating to the school. So the school would have to have time to review those questions to see if they would want to be included in the community service survey or whether it would just be town-related but not the Department of the School. So that's another another section that we have to have a discussion on. Yes.
Just a recommendation. Instead of spending the money, because I'm assuming that's going to be quite expensive on the survey going out to households.
It's nineteen.
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand, but we don't know if people are going to respond to it. They might not want to. What about putting something on the town website? And we just ask people, we can let people know that they go on the town's website and they click a form and they just let us know what what they would like to see out of a performance audit or something like that.
Just a survey monkey?
Yeah.
Oh, about the survey monkey or about town services, quality of services? So community survey is separate from the performance audit because you're really looking at getting an evaluation of how well do you think the town is at managing your tax dollar? What level of service are you getting for sanitation, public works, roads, police, all the services in town? And I'm not familiar with schools' sides of the survey, but it would it would be along school-type things. The the student test scores and performance and efficiency use of the tax dollar. And across how safe do you feel in your neighborhood? How walkable is your neighborhood? You know, what 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 are your top priorities for the community economic development? Parks, libraries, schools, whatever those may be. And when you get the aggregate response, the survey tools that are done professionally get a statistically valid sample so that it's very representative of the community. And on top of that, they will also do the survey monkey kind of additions where it's not going to affect the statistical validity of your sample to say this is really what 95% of the people think and feel in town. But you're going to capture the rest of the kind of the voluntary input, opinions, contributions beyond that. Now, we you could I certainly worked in a community where I did not use a survey tool. And we just did survey monkey and we put written surveys out in all the hair salons and mechanic shops and barbers and just trying to get input. And while it wasn't statistically relevant, we got more or less the same kind of feedback. And there's some value in it, but that was a town of less than 4,000. I don't think it's realistic to expect that you can reach a town of 35,000, 40,000 in the same scale using the same kind of effort, so.
I appreciate the insight. I just remember, I think it was last year, we we sent out postcards for people on the budget. And I went to every single household and I think like 3,000 people ended up showing up. So I just didn't know. And that was quite costly, so.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not sure what the I'd have to go back and look. But with the community survey tool, I think it's usually telephone surveys get the best response. They do mail out surveys and mail it back pre-postage paid. And that's really expensive, but sometimes you get a good response that way. There there's different ways of doing it. Online is very unreliable because you can't unless you have a way of verifying that they are actually a resident, you could get people from who knows where filling out your survey from other states.
Just one question. So I was just going to ask about collection methods. So this proposal that we got, is it something like what the census does? Like, if they don't get a response from somebody, are they sending someone to your house to get the response?
Well, maybe not to your house, but they will if they have your phone number, for example, if they're using a phone list, then they will try multiple times to to make contact.
Okay, so they're attempting to.
When you when you do a statistically random sample, you're sampling either by address or by phone or by whatever designation to find a specific respondent. And you want that respondent to make your statistical sample valid. Now, if they don't, they can just continue drawing random people until they get their 400 responses or whatever they're aiming for.
Okay, so it's just the one person from households?
Usually, yeah.
I'd like to suggest that we continue this discussion at our August meeting because there's still a lot of unknowns. And between now and then, there'll be a couple more meetings. More proposals may be coming in. Okay, is that okay with the group? Because we're getting close to 10 o'clock. We need to vote to continue beyond 10 o'clock. We'll go as far as we can up until 10. Yes, we should take care of the license. Thank you very much because someone has been waiting. So let us, if it's with permission of the council, let us skip to. We have we have a couple of very important things. F1, application for a new mobile food truck. Is it Pluff's? Is that how it's pronounced? Ploof? Ploof? Okay. Quality Catering Reference Pages 23 to 24. And I believe that there is a member from that organization or company online with us. Is that correct? Yes. So if you could go to page 23 to 24, you'll see the application. I'd like the applicant, I think it's Cara Genis. Are you online? Yes. Cara, would you just like?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience. I promised you that you'd be back online much sooner than now. But you can see that we have lots of important business that we're conducting. Just give us an overview of your request, please.
So I have a job that I was invited to at the Westwood YMCA. I think it's the third week in August to a arts and crafts fair. And I'm applying for a one-day peddler's mobile permit.
Okay, thank you. So it's just one day. It's so it's just one day only. And what what day is that?
Um, it's the third week in August. I think it's it's on a Saturday. I'm not sure of the date offhand because my calendar is in the restaurant I at work and I'm at home. So it's in the email that I sent to the city. I think her name was Jean. The date is in there.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have on page 23 of our packet information. The Police Department indicates no concern with the issuance of this license. Chief Heiss is here. What period of time was covered based on this report? Okay, I was just wondering if if the report goes back two years, three years, one year, what have you? Okay, zoning officer indicates no concerns with the issuance of the license. The applicant has a valid state mobile food establishment license that expires on July 13, 2022. May I have a motion to approve the application for the one-day license?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
President Dixon?
Yes.
So just so I'm understanding here, the town of Coventry requires somebody to come before the council to be able to roll their food truck into town for a day?
The State Enabling Act requires it.
So what's what's the legal process happening when there's food truck nights at Roger Williams Park in Providence? What are they? What are they all doing?
Probably the same.
I would like to.
I can look it up. I I know I wrote the ordinance and it was based entirely on the state law, which gave very little leeway. That is, you couldn't deviate from the state law. You had to adhere to it. Thank you. Town manager has handed it to me, so.
I can actually shed some light on that if you'd like. As of as of the beginning of 2021, the state of Rhode Island has allowed every city and town to leave it up to the town members and city council to decide if they would like to require the food business owner to have to come before city council to apply for a peddler's permit once a year. So once I obtain the license, the the state of Rhode Island requires me to get the mobile food permit. That's the first step. And then I have to go through Department of Business regulations. And then I have to go through the state fire marshal to get a fire inspection. And then I have to get a fire suppression system put in. And then I can have the Department of Health come out and inspect my truck. And then I have to get registered with the Department of Health. And then I can go before city council. But every single town and city is different. And right now, as of today, I am registered. This will be the 10th city that I've had to go before just to apply for a permit. Once I get the permit, though, usually next year, when the time comes for renewal, I won't have to go before city council again. I can just pay the fee. But the state of Rhode Island has left that up to every city to decide if they're going to require us to go before city council to get it. And so far, every city has required us to go before city council for the zoning meeting. So this is not new. But nobody's allowed us to just get a permit. Everybody's required us to do this whole process, which has been long and drawn out and tedious. And regardless of paying the fee, then we have to fit this into our lives. But, you know, it's it's what you have to do. But for anybody who thinks that this isn't one more step to have to go through, if you guys all knew what we went through and the expense we paid just to be licensed, it's unbelievable. And the scrutiny we face and the fees behind us just to do business for one day in the towns almost makes it not worth it. Even just to come into someone's driveway and do like a small birthday party requires so much work that it almost makes it not worth it. But this is the steps you have to take. So this is what we do.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I won't start a whole discussion on this now. I'll save it for offline. And I want to make sure that you get out of here because it's late. But just thank you for that food for thought. No pun intended.
Food for thought, thank you.
No problem.
We're still awake and we all laugh, so that's a that's a good sign.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Are we ready for a vote? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Emily Shockley?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc? Ann Dixon?
Yes, thank you.
Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Congratulations and thank you again for your patience and waiting so long to be on the agenda.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go through. I'm going to be jumping ahead for a couple of things. Hopefully, some of these things will go very quickly. Back to item, I'm going to go to item E4 because I think there's some time time constraints on this. E4, Discussion on Joining the Kent County Water Authority's Water Main Installation on Johnson's Boulevard at Westlake to Drop in New Culvert Pipes. Mr. Marshon?
Yes, thank you. So this is an area that was studied back in 2012, 2013, after the 2010 flooding. And the town got a quote that it would be $700,000 to install new culverts under the road at this area. And this year, as we speak, Kent County Water Authority is opening up the road to install water mains. And we have an opportunity to opportunity to join them in the trench and drop in culverts for a much lower cost, like the cost of the culverts plus, you know, a little bit of work. So the estimate, do we have an estimate yet, Mr. McGee?
No, I'm reading tomorrow morning the order of CD utilities to even present.
Okay.
But it's substantially less than what's happening.
So conceptually, we're thinking it might cost 15, 20 grand for the pipes and then labor. We might be in it for under 30 to 50 grand, which is far less than the 700,000. It's not budgeted, but this is something that when you have an opportunity like this to save hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's a good idea to do it. So without knowing what the costs are, I wanted to get direction from the town council as to your sentiments of authorizing me to proceed with this opportunity, whether you give me a preliminary authorization or if we ratify the expense at the next meeting. Wanted to present this opportunity to you. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. McGee?
Time is of essence in that the order of main is going to be installed in the month of August, beginning of August, before school opens up. So wait till your next meeting at the end of August for a decision. If you miss that window, we have to be building a brick and road to the council. We're waiting for the final permit to go forward.
So is it sufficient, Mr. Marshon, for us to just authorize you to proceed with the opportunity? Or do we need to have a dollar figure associated with this in order to proceed?
Mr. Solicitor?
Oh. Were you asking?
I don't know what we have.
I was looking down the line.
I I don't know what the the spending authority has been set. I think that's one of those financial policies that Director Mills and I are working on putting into place because I know from place to place, my spending authority could be anywhere from 10,000 to 50,000 to 100,000. And not knowing what it is here, I think, you know, so long as the town council is comfortable with, I I can report to you, I can send you the individual individually, the estimates that we get tomorrow to keep you apprised of it. And just maybe with the expectation that if it doesn't go over 100,000 is the upper limit, that this is still a good deal. Or whatever your threshold is and kind of pre-authorizing. this is still a good deal or whatever your threshold is and kind of preauthorizing. But we'll come back. As far as procurement, because this is Kent County Water Authority, it's within two weeks, this is going to be a sole source kind of emergency purchase that is not going to be subject to the typical bidding requirements for a project of this size. Because it is water related, it could potentially be COVID funding eligible.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, so.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my question, which pants pocket are we taking this out of?
Well, we have contingency, we have COVID funds and we have fund balance. So.
We also have approved by this council for funding to Rhode Island industrial bank also if you want.
Which is taking a loan against future years expenses.
So I'm going to put a motion to move us along, I'm going to put a motion on the table here. The motion is to authorize the town manager to proceed with the opportunity to join the Kent County Water Authority's main water main installation on Johnson's Boulevard at West Lake to drop in a new culvert pipes, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Oh, I made the motion, did I? Oh, I don't usually do that.
Surprise, surprise.
Okay, I made a motion.
I'm going to second the motion.
And we have a second?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, yes.
We got the second, now we're on to discussions.
Yes.
I was just trying to help along.
Thank you.
Interesting. I don't know how CD utility was selected, but can we at least get two quotes? Just I just don't know why we chose that particular one better.
CD utility doing the installation of the water main, they have to take the existing culverts out and put the water main underneath while they're taking them out. I would let them, since they're either there, have to install the new culverts while they put the water main underneath the culvert.
So Kent County Water has already chose that, is what you're saying?
Starting like to do it work out.
Understood, okay.
So they're already insured, already bonded.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mrs. Lima?
Yeah, given that, you know, there's been conversation about using contingency or fund balance for the performance audit or community survey, might we prioritize funding this from another revenue like COVID instead or making, I don't know, if that's been a discussion of which will prioritize where we take this from?
Money already spent should probably hit the COVID budget, yeah, like you're saying.
Yeah.
You know, agreeing that this is a good expense.
Yes.
It's a real cost savings. I agree with Councilperson Lima that while we discuss COVID funding, this should go top of list as it's money already allocated. Right, it also fits the bill.
Okay. Yes, are we ready to vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Hillary Lima.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ann Dixon.
Yes, five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. There's another one on here, G one, Mr. McGee, awarding the bid for DPS.
When a voter, Madam President, did we formally table?
We did not formally.
The item three and E.
No, we did not formally table.
Going past.
Yes, we have to have a motion to go beyond ten o'clock and I'm trying to get through the motions or the items that have to do with people who are here.
Oh, no, I I totally agree with you. I just wasn't sure if we had forgotten that was there.
No, I have a big note to myself, but yes, thank you for reminding me. I'm still awake. Okay, awarding the bid for asphalt pavement improvements in the amount of five hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and thirty-four cents funded by the fair share development fees and roadway infrastructure, reference pages twenty-five to twenty-seven. Mr. McGee.
Thank you. As you see in the cover memo, the funding sources for this, unfortunately, I can't do any more than the three roads that this funding allows. We originally had twelve streets we wanted to have done. Once the estimates were done, we brought it down to three in order to, we only had enough funds for the, we had five hundred sixty-seven thousand and the bids came in, the lowest qualified bidder was five hundred twenty-six thousand, nine forty. That leaves us a little bit of wiggle room in the event of any unforeseen when they're doing the project. So we're making the recommendation that we award the contract to Cardi Corporation in the amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and thirty-four cents. The three roads that will be done will be Waterman Hill, Hall Road and Calventown, portion of Calventown from Old Main Street to just past the kennels. Unfortunately, I wish I had more to do with the other districts, but if I have another funding source, I'd be more than happy to move forward and we'll have the next item up, we'll show what those roads should be.
Okay, do I have, do I have a motion to get us started?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
Can you just say those three roads again?
Yes, Waterman Hill, Hall Road and call the portion of Calventown from Old Main to just past the Calventown kennels.
So I know Calventown through the kennels is my neighborhood.
And those funds, the reason why that's done is the the fair share development fees from the Oaks are have to be spent in that area and that's why we're doing Calventown.
Okay. Where's Waterman Hill?
Waterman Hill is off of one oh two.
It's off one oh two.
From one oh two to fourteen and Hall Road is off of that road.
I'm sorry, it's north of the Rotary.
And then Hall?
It's off of Waterman Hill, it's a small stub road off of Hall. They both were there on a weekly basis doing pothole repairs because the road is just gone.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LeBlanc, you have a question?
This is one of the biggest hot topics in town is road repaving.
Yes.
And I don't think discussing it at ten ten at night, I don't know how these streets were selected at all wise, two in District One and one in District Two. I would prefer that we table this, just my presence, but.
Do you want to make a motion to table?
I actually would like to make a motion to table this.
I'll second it.
A second? All in favor of tabling? G one, what is the time schedule that you need for this vote?
Right now for the the pavement, we just talked about Cardi, they have a two week window within two weeks and then they're going to be shut off until the end of October, we start getting some of the cold weather. Mr. LeBlanc's question about how it was they were chosen, we based on, I I had District Three roads to be done, I had District Five. Believe me, there was no way that we could get all of the money, we didn't have the money to do all the roads that we needed to do. Waterman Hill and Hall had been ongoing issues for the last four years. The road is deteriorated to a point where there's nothing left of the base and we're there on a weekly basis repairing it and more pothole claims for damage to cars are from Waterman Hill and Hall Road. That's how that was determined. Calventown was done because the money by a court order, the fair share development fees from the Oaks have to be used in that area and that's why Calventown Road is being was chosen because it's a feeder road going into the Oaks subdivision.
Okay. It has been mentioned, we are after ten o'clock, ten, 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 our members all work full time. Is it possible for us to continue all of the items that we did not discuss tonight in another meeting later this week? Would we have to advertise that by Tuesday, Mr. Lauren?
When did you want to have the meeting?
If we could have it this week to finish it.
Well, it's one day. You've got time.
So if we.
By tomorrow afternoon, you can, if you advertise by tomorrow afternoon, you could do it Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Evening.
Evening.
Thursday evening.
So my question to members of the council, are you available Thursday evening?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
And at what time are you available, Mr. LeBlanc? I know you have some time restrictions.
Perhaps it would be around six or seven.
Six o'clock? Okay.
Oh, you know what, I'm in Boston, I can't be back right then.
Tell us the time.
Does Friday work for anyone? Could we do, could we do six thirty?
Of course.
I can do six thirty.
Is six thirty agreeable for Thursday evening?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yes?
I don't know, I'm sorry, it's my first time back in the office, so.
Want to say seven?
I can be, I can come in on Zoom.
Forgot how to go to work.
No, I can't, I can't do that, I'm sorry.
You do seven?
No, I can't be back here from Boston, that's it. I can, oh, at all?
No, no.
Why don't you proceed and then I'll, you know?
Well, it's Friday, it's Friday a possibility.
Yes.
It's Friday a possibility. So Friday is a possibility for everyone here? So I'm going to suggest that on Friday, I'll make a motion that we continue the discussion of all items that are on tonight's agenda, which we did not get to, that we will continue, we will continue this agenda on Friday evening starting at six o'clock.
Is that okay?
Will that work for everyone here? Mr. Lauren, will that work for you?
It won't, but I I'm, I think it'll work for someone in my firm, probably Mr. D'Agostino. It's a simple meeting, so.
Yes, it is. Mr. Marshon, will that work for you?
As long as, as long as I can join by Zoom myself, because I'm not a voting member of the board, I will be traveling at that time.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Cody, are you available?
I'm not.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not, but I can see a pen.
Okay, all right.
Can everybody meet Saturday morning?
Friday.
Did it say six or six thirty? I think six.
Six, okay. So the motion is made to resume this agenda. The items that we have not covered on Friday, the date on Friday is the thirtieth, July thirtieth at six o'clock in the town council chamber. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five yeas, no nays, okay. Thank you. Mr. McGee, we forgot to ask you if you are available, forgive us. Just nine minutes.
Still have public comment?
We we will now open it to public comment. There are a few people, hottie souls that are still with us. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Anyone like to make a public comment? We hope you'll join us again on Friday evening and we'll finish this. We will, we promise not to add any more agenda items for Friday evening. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn at ten thirteen?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Hillary Lima.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ann Dixon.
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.